Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, February 6, 2023. Call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Let the record reflect that all councilors are present. With that, I'd like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America, to the Republic which extends, one nation under the God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Under item four, there is no general this evening, so it brings us to item five, committee correspondence. Any committee correspondents at this time? No committee correspondence. Moving on to item six, public comment. Several folks have signed up for public comment. As a reminder, to please state your name and address for the record and keep your comments to three minutes. And first up is Kelly Archer.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kelly Archer, and I live at 185 Bradley Street. Mr. Mayor, upon my review of the Charter, Rules, and Order of Business and the Code of Ethics, who in the city holds you accountable to your actions or inactions as mayor? It was your responsibility to adhere to the will of the council on record of their January 9th council vote to table disappointment to an executive session. However, on 1/20, when I viewed the 1/23 council's agenda and according to my phone conversation with city administrator that same day, you unilaterally told staff to add it to an action item without discussion. Mr. Mayor, you exhibit an inappropriate use of power and authority which almost borders abuse implied or otherwise when you disagree with a decision or another's point of view. In effect, you disobeyed and violated the council's decision to substituting your own will to an action item and failed to understand and manage the ethical risks regarding the integrity of the process as well as potentially placing your own nominee's reputation in harm's way by having a public discussion. This controversial, this council's intention was to freely and confidentially discuss this nomination behind closed doors as this appointment is highly controversial and puts the city at extreme risk. I commend councilors Archer, Purdy, Hatch, and Johnston in protecting this nominee while still meeting the checks and balances of charter appointments and approvals by fully performing one's own due diligence prior to a council vote. In full disclosure, on January 9th, my notes stated three council procedure concerns that I witnessed. One was the motion of executive session did not include a state statute. Two was the mayor did not fully summarize the intention of the motion prior to calling the vote. And third was the executive session vote on the floor failed by one vote due to three fifths of the members needed. On 1/23 at 1:00 AM, I emailed a complete summary of this and all the rules, the ethics, and the charter to several citizens with the expectation that city officials may bring up or to request any technicality of a 1-9 vote, be it the three fifths rule, the citation of personnel language, as to why not to go to executive session and rewrite, spin, or redo a 1-9 council action, or to provide a reason to the mayor's 1-19 posted agenda of an action item unilateral decision. Last Tuesday, January 31st, I spoke with the city administrator, revealing all the above and more, and asking about the timetable of when this technicality was found and who requested this research of the 1-9 vote. In this 1/31 conversation, he and I, city administrator, stated in the last couple of days that the mayor's city attorney nor himself knew of this technicality until then. We also discussed the original attorney's opine was an error, as well as the nominee has waited for a month and wants to attend the executive session if scheduled. Why was the city attorney engaged with taxpayer money to research a 1-9 vote when this matter could be simply solved and taken to executive session at the agenda-setting meeting? Why would any of you even consider considering placing Planner Prescott, his staff, the planning board, and the city in a deficit and at risk? Counselors, ask the city attorney and/or city administrator how many errors in due process, shortcuts, notifications, minor staff reviews versus planning board deliberations, proordinance, and settlements were his. And please note, at the time of the 1-19 agenda posting to an action item, city officials, according to Mr. Kane-Rath, did not know of any technicality. Therefore, Mr. Mayor, you violated the will of the council by placing it on the action item and not as an executive session. Hence, my 2-1 FOIA request, which in part states between 1/9/23 to 2-1/23, the mayor, city attorney, and city administrator, and to also include all those persons who requested the research of a 1/9/23 council vote to executive session. What date was this request, to whom it was requested, and when did the response of a technicality transpire? Counselors, there were errors all around. Don't be complicit in the recent events. I look forward to receiving the FOIA documents and listening to your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Jean Saunders.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilor's Administrator Kane-Rath. My name is Jean Saunders, and I reside at 3 Plymouth Drive in Saco. I also help coordinate the work of Age Friendly Saco and All Volunteer Organization, dedicated to making Saco a more livable community for all. I'm here to ask for your assistance tonight to reopen the Community Center Commercial Kitchen, which has not been used since prior to the pandemic. I have made many requests in the past to try and get this kitchen reopened unsuccessfully, and tonight I ask for you to help us get this process started so that it can once again be used for the residents of Saco. In the past, the seniority program offered a once monthly breakfast for our older adults, but this breakfast is no longer being offered. Also in the past, after the creation of the community gardens at the community center, a harvest meal was made by the Saco Parks and Rec staff along with our age-friendly volunteers in the commercial kitchen. This was a much-enjoyed intergenerational program, enjoyed by both our schoolchildren and our older adults. Presently, when meals are offered by seniority, such as the last Thanksgiving Day meal, these meals are no longer prepared in our community kitchen, but they are catered events. When we were first asked about being able to use a kitchen, we were told we couldn't as we were not served safe-certified. So we worked with our local nonprofit partners to have a volunteer available with this certification. After that, after we obtained the certification, we were told the dishwasher needed repairs. Now we are told the dishwasher needs to be replaced. The commercial kitchen appears to be in disrepair, and we're again asking for your support to bring this back online. Age Friendly Saco was recently made available an opportunity through the Southern Maine Area Agency on Aging. They are offering a one-time Older Americans Act funding opportunity for organizations in Cumberland and York Counties that support older adults. Community partners can apply for these opera funds to support existing programs or new projects to reduce social isolation and enhance or create community connections for our older adults. Since the COVID-19 pandemic has left us all reckoning with the experience of social isolation, for many of our older residents, however, the pandemic has not only exposed pre-existing crisis levels of isolation, but has exacerbated them. We at Age Friendly Saco would like to begin to address social isolation by providing a monthly luncheon at the community center. We would also like to apply for this grant, but at our present, we cannot because we don't have a facility which we can host a community luncheon. We're in the process of organizing, as we speak, a Valentine's Day meal, which will be delivered next Monday. Thus far, residents in our three communities of Old Orchard Beach, Saco, and Bitterford have signed up for over 300 meals. We have over 20 volunteer drivers that will be delivering these meals next week, included with Thornton Academy cards designed by our Thornton Academy students. We're able to provide this service through our collaboration with another not-for-profit organization, Ferry Beet Retreat and Conference Center, because they have a commercial kitchen that they are allowed to use. As we have seen in the past few months, as well as this past week, there are times in which the community might benefit from having a commercial kitchen available to the community. Should the community center ever be needed, as it has been used before as an evacuation center, we would not have a kitchen facility available. I have worked for a long period of time, appealing directly to the Parks and Rec staff administration to bring this kitchen, a resource that belongs to our community, back online so it can be used to serve the residents of Saco. As you're probably aware, Age Friendly Saco's volunteers work diligently to serve the needs of our residents as we address food insecurity through our volunteer deliveries of food from the Saco Food Pantry, as well as monthly delivery of senior food boxes through the USDA program. Please help us bring this commercial kitchen, the community center, available to be used again. Thank you in advance for your consideration.
Thank you. Up next is Ted Saroyz.
Mayor, Council, thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Ted Saroyz. I live at 38 Summer Street here in Saco. As you consider the appointment of former Saco City Planner Bob Hamblin to the planning board, I hope you took time to review the packet from your July 12, 2021, city council meeting. On page 96 was a letter from Craig Gardner, the attorney representing the Trinity Episcopal Church. In this letter, Mr. Gardner details what he feels are numerous errors in judgment Bob Hamblin made as our city planner when he allowed the Acapella Hair Studio to terminate their contract agreement in 2021. This agreement was penned in 2006, allowing the historic Gilpatrick House at the corner of Main and Summer Street to be used as a hair studio. I, many of my neighbors, the Historic Commission, and the planning board were all involved in this process. But without any input from any of these people, Mr. Hamblin unilaterally terminated this contract that we worked on. He also included a minor site plan change, which allowed for the subdividing of the historic Gilpatrick property. By Mr. Hamblin declaring that this is a minor change, it avoided scrutiny of the Saco's planning board, Historic Preservation Commission, and our entire neighborhood. This action not only created an ugly lawsuit filed by the abutting Trinity Episcopal Church, but has caused many property owners to lose trust in City Hall to keep us informed and involved in the affairs of our city. We recently had a citizen survey on city services. The survey pointed out this loss of trust. Many now have a City Hall for protecting our property values and our historical heritage. So in light of this and many other issues brought up by various other Saco citizens, I respectfully request that you vote down the appointment of Bob Hamblin as member of our planning board. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Sheldon Nightingale.
Good evening. My name is Sheldon Nightingale. I reside in Ward 7 here in Saco. I am a volunteer and vice president of the board for Age Friendly Saco. And just to kind of clarify some of the things that Age Friendly Saco does, I'm also on the board of Saco Meals Program. I'm on the board of the Saco Food Pantry and volunteer with both of those organizations. And the reason I say this is because most of the people that you see over here are part of Age Friendly, but they're also involved in other things within the community. So, you know, they're very active. You know, I'm here tonight to, you know, ask about our commercial kitchen at the rec center. My understanding, it hasn't been used since prior to COVID. As Jean mentioned, there's many opportunities to use it. One of the things I hear, because the reason we can't use it is because of the dishwasher. At first, I thought it was broke, needed repair, but now I guess it is beyond repair. But if that's the case, you know, either, you know, we should fix it, replace it. You know, if that's not possible, it's still not a reason to not serve meals out of that kitchen. As I mentioned before, I'm part of Saco Meals Program. Saco Meals Program has a similar problem. Their dishwasher works, but their drying area is not sufficient, so they can't use the dishwasher. What they opted to do was use eco-friendly, you know, disposable dentware. You know, it adds some cost to it, but the kitchen is still able to be utilized. You know, this could be done here at the Saco Rec as well. But, you know, the bottom line is if we, somewhere along the line, there's a lot of expense gone into putting this kitchen in. You know, if we're going to have it, let's get it in working order. If we choose, you know, not to have it, well, let's dismantle it and sell it off before it is worthless. I mean, all of these appliances and everything are in demand and could be sold. I think it would be preferable to get it back in working order and to utilize it. We have a great community here in Saco. I think overall, Saco does a great job, you know, with its use, with the recreation department, and, you know, senior citizens, well, although I think that has deteriorated a little bit over the last couple of years, you know, since the onset of COVID. With that, I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Up next is Glenn Sharet.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Sharet. I live at 240 Ferry Road right here in Saco. Just a little bit about myself. My wife and I retired here from Alfred. We love Saco. I'm a retired general contractor, but most recently I retired from the profession of a code enforcement officer. I still hold valid license for code enforcement, plumbing, and a health officer. Age Friendly Saco, I've been a member for less than two weeks, and I'm pretty privileged to be working with this organization. They're pretty enthusiastic, and I'm anxious to keep the ball rolling for them. The commercial kitchen, I'll speak briefly about that. You all have seen a letter from me describing what's going on over there. Nothing has changed, other than the fact that I have asked the Public Health Department under DHHS to pay us a visit. They're coming tomorrow at 1:00. Tom Jenkins, who is the district health inspector for Saco, will be attending that meeting. The purpose for the meeting is to let us know if, what the kitchen is required to have. Don Roth will be there. Ryan will be there, and myself. Any of you members are more than welcome to come, obviously. Two things, I think. I think we need a third sink basin, but Tom will let us know on that. The dishwasher, I'm hearing all kinds of stories. I don't really know what's wrong with that. Maybe Don Roth can fill us in tomorrow. So, once I know, I'll let the council members know what I find out. According to the comp plan, 18% of our population is aged 65 and older. I think this kitchen is too much of a resource to let it go to mothballs. You know, if the city has to pay $5,000 or $6,000 to get it in operation, I think that's well worth the money, in my opinion. And that's all I have to say. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Up next is David Steed. Okay. Moving on to Lynn Steed.
Am I getting a reputation, or what? Okay, my name is Lynn Steed, as you might have heard. I live on Hillview Avenue in Area 1. I've been an Age Friendly volunteer since the very first meeting in 2016. Jean roped me in, and I totally believe in this program. I want to say to start out that I am opinionated, and one of my opinions is that the community center really has excellent programs, and it's well-used on the weekends even. But the programs predominantly are for younger people. It used to have a very active seniority program. They had holiday meals. They had monthly breakfasts. They were packed. People loved it. You couldn't, in fact, get in if you didn't register very early. One of the very first events that Age Friendly Saco had was a St. Patrick's Day dance, which will live in perpetuity because of the pictures on the web. But anyway, we had the assistant director's husband, who actually cooked corned beef and cabbage in that very same kitchen, and it went well. We all volunteered and helped, and we all enjoyed it. I'd like to point out that Bitterford has a lot of community meals. SMA has a monthly thing at the 50-plus center. Youthful Maine pairs up with SMA sometimes, Bon Appetit, Seeds of Hope. They all have community programs. Saco does have Saco Meals, and Sheldon is probably on that board because I got him out of his chair. But what about our community center? We have a commercial kitchen. Why don't we make it a real community center and include older adults? We're very much left out of that picture as far as that kitchen goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is John Harkins.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is John Harkins for Christopher Terrace. I'll be brief. There are a lot of complaints here this evening, which is sad. A community of this size and its wealth can't get a washing machine. It's shameful. Shameful. Seniors do a lot. They are. They're a large segment of our population. They are active, and they turned out from many activities. And as far as the public is concerned, small group meetings, you want to sign up for a facility, we pay for it. A fee is charged. That's shameful. Taxpayers pay for these facilities. As a side, I don't know if any of you have been down to the railroad station. Our asset, if you will, Regional Transportation Center, we worked to get it here. We should take a hard look at that and what's going on there in its maintenance. I think there's something amiss. A lot of complaints seem to be stemmed from various administrative sectors that are not being addressed. And with that, I wish you all well, and hopefully you can address some of the issues that have been presented this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Patrick Robinson.
Hi, good evening. My name is Patrick Robinson. I am one of the owners of Cosmic Solutions LLC, doing business as Zero Gravity Cannabis at 74 Industrial Park Road for the past five years. Our operation in Saco includes medical cannabis cultivation, as well as cannabis extraction lab, where we process cannabis into a variety of other products for use by Maine's medical patients. We do this for ourselves in-house, and we do this for other cultivators throughout the state as a service in the lab. Saco recently approved our facility to Saco recently approved our facility to transition from medical caregiver facility to a state medical dispensary license for cultivation and extraction. We currently employ 35 people in the Saco facility and related operations. I'm here tonight to ask that the Saco Town Council consider opting in for adult-use cultivation and manufacturing to allow us to cultivate and process cannabis products for both the medical and adult-use markets. We have made a significant investment in the Saco facility, as well as in our employees there. The ability to grow and process products for both markets is crucial to the health and growth of our business. We understand that Saco might not have an appetite to allow adult-use retail stores at this time. To be clear, we are only asking that Saco consider opting in for adult-use cultivation and manufacturing. These activities are already happening for the medical program at facilities in the town's approved zones. A change to allow cultivation and manufacturing for adult use would not be a significant change for the town. The Saco Planning Board is experienced in reviewing and approving conditional use permits for cannabis businesses. The town already has a marijuana business licensing program in place. There is no requirement that the town opt in for adult-use license, for all adult-use license categories. For example, both Biddeford and Scarborough have opted in for adult-use cultivation and manufacturing, but did not opt in for adult-use retail. Towns also have the option to cap the size of adult-use cultivation if there are concerns about large Tier IV commercial grows, which are up to 20,000 square feet of canopy. As an incentive, the state offers a grant of up to $20,000 for towns that opt in to provide an offset for expenses incurred in permitting, license, and regulating adult-use cannabis businesses. The market has shifted. The medical cannabis market will continue to rapidly shrink. We have already had to lay off employees as the state transitions to more of a recreational market, and the investments we have made in our Saco facility will be for naught if we can't participate in the expanding adult-use market. The process of converting our facility to a dispensary with the town of Saco went great, and I don't see this being much different. We don't want to continue layoffs. Quite a few employees live here in Saco. If we can process, if we can use our lab to process for adult-use cultivation, as well as medical, we'd continue to have more folks from around the state come visiting our town and do business here. Thank you in advance for your consideration for adding adult-use cultivation and manufacturing to Saco's marijuana business licensing program. We look forward to continuing to grow our business in Saco.
Thank you very much. That is it for public comment that has signed up. If there's any member of the public who did not sign up and wishes to speak, please come forward and be heard.
To put you on the spot, my name is John Corder at 12 Ashwood Drive. I am a member of Age-friendly Saco, but I come here also on my own thought about, even last week, finding out that the Transportation Center with, what, an occupancy of 70 or 80 people is where we're supposed to go if our houses freeze, we have no power and all of that. And I just, I was in awe that we don't have a shelter that's assigned any longer. I heard that the shelter originally was where the rec center is now. They are outfitted with a kitchen, which apparently we can't use, and you've heard that from several people. I'll volunteer to become a serve-safe person if that's the excuse being made why we can't serve meals there during an outage. And I'm sure a lot of us in our group would volunteer to man that shelter, should there be that 1-in-100-year disaster we have, whether it be hurricane, ice storm, or what it might be. But we've all had those kind of, you know, we've been through some of that, and none of us have seen what they've seen in other states with fires and all that other stuff. So, I just, part of it's, yes, we need the kitchen to be open, it needs to be accessible. And there are people that would volunteer. This isn't a money thing. This is basically making a decision to say, you know what? That'll be where our shelter is, and it may be that you can apply for funds or grants or something to the effect of getting FEMA to give you some money to maintain it and keep it, keep the kitchen going, replace the dishwasher, whatever it is that's going on. It's just, it baffles me that that's just kind of been disregarded because we didn't use it for a few years, because people couldn't even get next to each other. So, it shouldn't be an excuse that COVID has shut down the kitchen. It should be that we take advantage of a resource the city owns and manages, and you think about it, it's central Saco. Transportation Center, if I had to go from outside to get there, there may be traffic issues, it's on the top of a hill, it's all glass, there are two men's toilets and two women's toilets in there. You know, the rec center would be a place to have cots and things that are set up. I just, I worked for Portland for many years and worked with the Civic, not the Civic Center, the Expo and its uses, and, you know, Saco's only 1/3 the size of Portland, and I'm not saying we need to be like Portland, but boy, you know, they've really made some efforts to get their stuff in place for the homeless, for outages, and to be a shelter and have them set up. And I just, I'm baffled that the Transportation Center somehow became the target of our only shelter in this city. And without any ability to cook, if people had, if we had a power outage and people couldn't cook, their houses froze, they had no place to, it's not a warming center, this is a place you have to go for several days, we should be able to cook some meals, even if it's oatmeal or spaghetti. We should be able to do something with that kitchen. So, I'm just advocating that we allocate the resource, the resources we own as a city to have a kitchen that's available, have cots, and have it set up as an emergency shelter for that 1-in-100-year storm or catastrophic event. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before the City Council? Please come forward and be heard.
I'm Inga Brown. I live at 161 Simpson Road in Ward 1. Mr. Mayor, as I stated on January 9th during public comments, your nomination of the former city planner to the planning board is an alarming choice. It shows an absolute disregard for the ethics standards here on the municipal level and also on the state level. I think this nomination is dangerous for Saco. It thrusts us into an ethical quagmire at every turn, no matter how we look at it. I would ask that you reconsider your choice for this nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak before the City Council? Please come forward and be heard.
Jane Karen, 264 Lincoln Street in Saco, Ward 5. And I've heard a lot this evening about the Age-friendly and Community Kitchen, which I was unaware of, and certainly support that kitchen being opened up and used and utilized, and the planning in advance for catastrophic events. That should be a priority for our city. I have spoken in the past concerning Mr. Hamlin's appointment to the planning board, and I still feel that it puts the city at risk, and request that that be voted down at that time when it comes up. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for public comment. Moving on from public comment to Item 7, Approval of the Minutes for January 9th, 2023. Is our motion approved of the minutes?
So moved.
Counselor Berman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion on the amendments from the 9th, January 9th, excuse me? Roll call vote, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Brings us to Item 8, Consent Items. There are several consent agenda items. One is to approve the March, April, and May council dates. Item B is application for a license to operate Games of Chance. Item C is a massage establishment license for Quinzan Lu doing business as Saco Green Spa. Item D, Massage Therapist License Application for Yan Yan Zhao. And Item E, a Massage Therapist License Application for Sherri Ross. Item F, Confirm Mayor's Reappointments of Barbara Dresser and Cho Do to the Board of Assessment and Review. And Item G, Confirm Mayor's Reappointment of Susan Spath, Ted Saroyes, and Tim Harder to the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. And Item H, to Confirm Mayor's Appointment of Elise Marquis to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? Counselor Berman?
I would just note that on the original version of the packet, there was a typo in the dates, and May 20th was listed as the date. I see it's been corrected to May 22nd, but anyone who saw an earlier version should note that correction.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Brings us to Item 9, Action Items. Page 23 in your packet. Item A is a tabled, an item that was tabled on January 9th, and that's confirm mayor's appointment to planning board for Bob Hamlin. Is there a counselor that wants to untable this motion? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I move to untable the January 9th, 2023 City Council vote regarding confirm mayor's appointment to planning board, Bob Hamlin, and further move that that item be placed on a future City Council meeting agenda as an executive session under MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 4056A, Personnel Matters.
Motion's been made to untable this item and move to a future, and move it to a future executive session under Personnel Matters. Am I repeating that clear, because apparently there's some confusion after the clarification that I put out last time? So, I just want to make sure that we're clear, that we're motioning to untable, and then further move to put it to a different meeting in executive session under Personnel Matters. Thank you. There's been a motion, and there's been a second. Is there any discussion? Counselor Purdy?
Are we able to make an adjustment to the, to the motion, an emotion to untable? I mean, seems to me it's a simple question of tabling or untabling. If Counsel Hatch wants to make an adjustment after it's been untabled, then he's more than, you know, more than welcome to. I just think that, I just think that it should be a simple motion to table or untable.
Thank you. Counselor Gunn?
I just want to piggyback on Counselor Purdy. Yes, we simply untable the motion, and then we can have a debate about whether or not we actually want to put it into a executive session, because as has been noted, we need five counselors to put it in executive session. So, untabling requires a simple majority. It does, am I correct on that? Okay, thank you. So, to not convolate, confuse the two, and given all the talk that we heard out tonight about procedure, let's actually follow correct procedure and simply untable it.
Thank you. Counselor Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things. First, I'm deeply concerned about having an executive discussion to discuss a mayoral appointment to a board or committee. I think meeting behind closed doors to air someone's dirty laundry just sounds terrible. I also think the precedent sets is really problematic. We could be de facto setting a new procedure by which we now have to evaluate mayoral appointments in executive session, prolonging the process, and really creating what's a merropragative into a deeply political situation, which I would like to avoid. Second, it seems to me that the cleanest way to fix the situation is that I move to amend the motion to strike the language about executive session and simply move to untable
Counselor Berman has made an amendment to the untabling motion to strike the executive session language. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Purdy. Any discussion on the amendment only? Counselor Archer, then Counselor Hatch?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion would be considered illegal, as it is actually trying to vote down, effectively it's the negative to the, it's the polar opposite of what we're trying to do. So, it would be an illegal motion. The best way to do it is just to take the vote of how it is, if the council so chooses, to kill it, and then revote. But to amend, that changes the polar opposite is not, is not allowed.
Thank you, Counselor Archer. Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I just want to clarify my intention here, and this is based on my own personal work experiences relative to issues that involve personnel. I think it's very appropriate that those kinds of discussions be conducted with the utmost discretion and confidentiality. I think we have the potential, when external perceptions of a personal reputations can be affected by discussing these issues publicly, it would seem that the use of the executive session option would be fairer to all concerned. Whether this appointment ends up being debated publicly tonight or in executive session later, in support of my argument against this appointment, I'm prepared to share a multitude of documented evidence I have gathered from a variety of sources, including FOIA documents. I think to benefit all concerned, I would much rather do that in a confidential executive session forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment to the untabling motion? Counselor Gunn?
To Counselor Archer's point, because obviously we want to be on right procedure here, if we were to vote down the untabling with the Counselor Berman's alteration, because we're voting down a motion to untable, would that preclude us from taking another vote, as what Counselor Purdy and myself and Counselor Berman have indicated would be more, at least in our opinion, more prudent, which would be a simple up or down vote to untable? Would vote, the first vote, would negate that ability? I suppose that's a parliamentary question.
So, you, the council operates on a modified Roberts rules. So, as long as you take up issues, and each side has the ability to, to talk about the items on the floor, you do not run by standard Roberts rules of order. So, it's modified to make sure that everybody gets a fair shake, and that's, that's the purpose of the modified Roberts rules. So, I, I think the untabling motion with the executive session and the amendments are more confusing than if you just took up the untabling motion in general and moved forward. But we are here at the amendment to the untabling motion, which I, without my, without the book and rules and order of business with me, I cannot tell you that that is illegal or improper. But it does create some more confusion when you're trying to amend a motion to untable and push something to executive session. Counselor Berman?
Well, I appreciate and apologize for the confusion that an amendment to the motion may have created. I disagree with Counselor Archer's summary of what the motion entails. It doesn't produce the polar opposite of the motion. The motion was attempted, was attempting to accomplish two things, to untable the nomination and to move the nomination into executive session. The amendment simply turns that into one thing that can then be taken up separately. It's not a motion to undo the original motion, it's just to do half of what the original motion wanted. If the amendment passes, somebody could then propose to take it to executive session separately. It allows us to consider those as two separate votes.
Thank you. Counselor Berman? Counselor Purdy?
Just as a, it seems to me that, it seems to me that a motion to untable and move it to an executive session can't be done because they're both, they both rely on... they're both, they both rely on different, what's the word I want?
Actions?
Well, yeah, different, different, I don't know, metrics as far as the, the vote on, the vote to untable only requires four votes. A vote to move it to executive session requires five, so I don't see how we can vote on both of those things at one time.
Thank you, Counselor Purdy. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I remain a bit confused on this. I mean, I certainly seconded the motion, because I, I felt it would achieve what I thought council intended last time we discussed this. But I've been challenged with this since it didn't appear, since an executive session didn't appear on the agenda following previous meeting. So, I'm still seeking clarity on the process here, where the original motion was a tabling motion. There was no subsequent part of that motion that said we were going to an executive session. I fully understood that it required three-fifths majority, and it would be a separate vote on a separate night. Somewhere along in this process, it seems they merged, and I don't understand how that happened. So, I don't fully understand where or why this appears back on the agenda to untable, when the previous four, three vote was to just outright table it, with the understanding that an executive session, which we would vote to enter or not, would appear on an agenda in the future. That's the process that's failed. It never appeared. It just got thrown back on, again, in my opinion, against the wishes of the four that originally voted to see an executive session placed on the agenda. I mean, we have an executive session tonight that has four matters on it. It could have been thrown into that. We could have voted to enter it, or we could not have voted to enter it. It seems to me that we've tried to play some gamemanship here to, I guess, get an outcome we, we wanted. So, while I understand there's some reservations from some counselors to discuss this in an executive session, I think that several of your fellow counselors have expressed why it should be discussed in an executive session. We have an attorney's opinion that says it can be discussed in an executive session. And I still am in the same camp that say, we should continue this discussion in executive session, and when we come out of that, however you vote is the process. That's always been the process. I'm one-seventh of the vote, you all are another seventh. So, to do otherwise, quite frankly, I think it's just disingenuous and rather insulting to the rest of your comrades here. We have a process, the process allows it, and I think that's the process we should follow. Again, at the end of it, you vote how you vote. But I think that there is information that not all of you are probably privy to, or you haven't, for one, been here as long, or served in council for law, for as long. And equally, you've heard members of the public, and you can sit here and say, oh, it's five members, or it's the NIMBYs, to use that term. Regardless, it's members of the public, and I can assure you, I've heard from others just in the last three weeks, or how long, however long it's been, that aren't your frequent flyers, as the term likes to be thrown around, that were appalled when they caught wind of this appointment. And my concern remains for the municipality as a whole in the planning board, and how this appointment could really cause friction going forward, whether it be legal or just muddying up the entire process. And I think those are valid concerns, and I would, again, respectfully request that we move this to an executive session. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Archer, then Counselor Gunn. Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, I'm going to speak on two objects, and I think the motion, I think, is confusing, and the best way to handle it is just to vote it up or down to table, and then, if so chosen, a motion during that discussion should be to the executive session. So, I think that is the cleanest way to handle it. But I also want, while I still have the floor, I do want to talk, because I do disagree with Counselor Berman, there's a law on how executive sessions to be held. It's general provisions, public records, and proceedings, freedom of access, 405, executive session. There is a specific item in which the state has determined that it is not in the best interest to put out someone's laundry publicly. The state has recognized the importance of, when appropriate, for anybody who is, here, I'll read it, "Discussion or consideration of the employment appropriate appointment." So, that's the term we're looking at, this is an appointment. Section 1, "An executive session may be held if public possession could be reasonably expected to cause damage to the individual's reputation, or the individual's right to privacy would be violated." I do intend to discuss with this council some things that could be deemed under this level. So, I'm noticing you that I do intend to disclose how I feel. If this body does not recognize it, then I will accept that as its answer, that it's fully, this body is fully acceptance of what I have to say in a public manner. I do want to, I outreach our city administrator to get this done in this setting in which law has prescribed to be the best possible outlet. So, I don't want...
I've got this on the way. Setting it's lost.
Sorry? I don't need to hear from you. It's my intent to disclose things that I do believe that could harm this individual's in a public setting. So, I would like this to be an executive session, and it is backed by evidence, and it's backed by other documents that I have. So, I will accept this council's vote, but that's also allowing the people that may want the information to be private permission to disclose. So, that's how I feel on that.
Thank you. Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this is, we're down, basically down to two topics. The topic of Mr. Hamlin's appointment, and whether or not we go into executive session really is a whole separate enchilada. The real issue here is the simple untabling motion. Now, like I, as Counselor Purdy alluded to, though, we untable with four votes, but you need to go into executive with five votes. So, to have it all in the same vote is problematic. So, either I would ask that we take a five-minute recess and consult Roberts rules to find out if that's legal or not, and, or, I would simply request, I know, I must address the chair, though, but I would simply request that Counselor Hatch withdraw his initial motion to untable and go into exec, and simply replace it with a simple motion to untable, which is four votes. And if we do that, then we can turn around and have a debate about the merits, although we've already started having the debate about the merits of going into executive session. If we have the five votes, then we go into executive session on a later date. And if we don't, then we can have the up or down vote tonight, though. But let's make it nice and clean, and as Counselor Johnston alluded to, let's get rid of this gamemanship here, as if you're not going to get the votes you want on one section or the other, though. Let's make it nice and clean here. Otherwise, the whole thing's going to be problematic, though, and I really don't think it does a service to the city, or anyone listening, or the applicant for that matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, Counselor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Listening to the conversation, you know, originally, I had come into this evening planning on not going, voting for going into executive session. I did not feel that it was needed. I believed that the open discussion was going to be as is. We vote, if you not, don't like the appointment, you would vote no. Unfortunately, listening to the conversations of Counselor Johnston, Counselor Archer, at this point right now, I'm actually leaning towards the executive session, because I am concerned of some information that they are stating that may be coming out. This is not that I still agree with the process, but again, to protect the individual, unfortunately, I, I feel that it probably is needed.
So, back to the amendment, the amendment to the untabling motion, that's where we are. I guess if there's, if there's some willingness from Counselor Purdy to withdraw a second, and Counselor Berman to withdraw his initial, and then Counselor Johnston to withdraw the second, and Counselor Hatch to withdraw his initial motion, and then just go to a untabling motion, that, again, might be easier, and then a secondary motion can happen if the parties want to go into executive session. Or we can just have a vote on these items as we see fit. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. All right, going back to my initial comments, I don't understand the necessary nature of untabling at this point. The, they're two separate issues. So, we're all confused here, trying to incorporate, like, we're going to have to vote on a separate night to enter an executive session regardless of whatever this motion is. So, that simply gets on the agenda by the way we always have done it. You know, if there's four here, or if the mayor's willing to put it on there, if not, there's four counselors here that are willing to, you know, approach the city administrator about it, then we get it on the agenda that way. I just, just leave it tabled, and we deal with this another night, after we have that executive session, which, again, going back to several meetings ago, that was the intent at that time of that council.
Thank you. Counselor Berman?
I think at this point that may be best accomplished by voting no on the motion to untable, the motion. And as I understand Counselor Hatch's motion, which contains a motion to enter executive session, it would fail even with forays, which would leave the item on the table and not permit an untabling.
Any further discussion on this amendment to remove the executive session piece to the motion to untable? With no further discussion, a roll call vote on the amendment only, amendment only, to remove the executive session requirement from Counselor Hatch's initial motion. Counselor Archer?
No.
Counselor Purdy? Counselor Gunn? Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
No.
Counselor McPhail?
No.
Counselor Johnston?
No.
The amendment fails. So, back to the main motion, which is to untable this item and move to executive session at a later date. So, on the main motion, any further discussion? Counselor Purdy?
If I understand this correctly, a no vote on this would leave it on the table, and...
You have not untabled anything yet, so there's nothing on the table.
Or, leave it off the table, sorry, I misspoke. A no vote would leave it on, off the table, tabled, whatever. And the executive session could still be scheduled, whether, because it requires five votes to go into an executive, executive session, that would be a separate matter for another meeting. And to be clear, when the vote was taken last, the last meeting, the ninth, my vote was to simply table it, was not to move into an executive session. But I will say that, at this point, my feelings on this, this, when I, when I came here this evening were that, as, well, Counselor McPhail expressed it very well, and I agree with what she said. At this point, my, my feelings are that, well, I've made my feelings clear on, on appointments in the past, and I'm not going to bore you by repeating them. The only thing I will say is that I think Bob Hamlin is extremely qualified for the, for the position. But it seems to me that I'm not willing to, I, I have no idea what is going to be presented tonight, and because I don't want to see a citizen who is willing to serve the city dragged through the mud, I would rather see this go to executive session.
Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's just a comment that was just made, and I just wanted to make it sure, if anything, to the public, how executive sessions can come to the floor. There's four different ways. The mayor can add it to any agenda that he or she so chooses. The city administrator can add it. The council can do it on the floor with a five-three vote, or, because of our other rules, for, any type of four comments to our city administrator can direct him to add. So, we have four different ways to do it. It's not just a five, a five-two vote. There are three other ways to do it. Again, we, we don't, when the mayor adds something, we don't vote on it. It's just, it's on the agenda, and we go to discuss it. So, I just wanted to make it clear that you don't need to vote to get it into executive session. You do that when it's on the floor, when we're discussing it at the Diaz. But there are three other ways, avenues, in order to get executive session done. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And for clarification, because it gets thrown out a lot, and it's a misconception, the city administrator and myself, and the deputy mayor, sit down and collaborate on the agendas. There's no mayor prerogative to put something on the agenda, and it's not one unilateral person, with the exception of the city administrator. And that's been, that's actually been looked at by the city solicitor in a previous issue related to agenda setting. So, again, it's a collaborative effort, not one person unilaterally dictating what's going to be on an agenda. Counselor Berman, then Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Two quick points. One is, we vote to enter executive session every time. It shows up on the agenda, we do it in a pro forma manner. No one's voted no in the time that I've been watching, but there is a vote to enter executive session for every executive session. And if we don't get five votes to say yea, we would not enter executive session despite it being on the agenda. So, it is always a council vote of five yea's to enter executive session. Second, I'm becoming deeply concerned by the politi, politi, politicalization of our appointments. These are people who are volunteering their time, and it takes the planning board an incredible amount of time. But we've seen similar politics around city historian and, and other appointments. These are people who love Saco, who are dedicating their time to Saco, who are stepping up to engage in public service for no compensation other than, than their community-minded nature. And to take these people and shine a spotlight on them, and make continuations, and drag them through the mud, it's unconscionable, and it's really, it makes political what ought to be apolitical, and it takes some of our best and most volunteer-spirited people, and makes it distasteful for them to enter public service. And so, I'm deeply concerned about where this is going, and the process we've seen play out in a couple of situations now. And I fear some of this talk about things coming out and documents in executive session just serves to make that worse, and frankly, I find it kind of saddening.
Thank you. City Administrator Kainrath?
Yeah, thank you. Just two quick points for clarification. One, this vote will need five votes to prevail, if I'm not mistaken. And two, it's also my understanding that if it does prevail, we can go into executive session this evening, it being a properly-nosed agenda item on this matter, if it gets five votes. The city solicitor is here, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I believe we can do that tonight if there are five votes.
Counselor Johnston?
Trying to collect my thoughts. Counselor Hatch's motion, again, I'm going back to where I was after the last time, and I agree with Counselor Purdy, that was simply a tabling motion. It was not an executive session motion. We would have had to, had that on the agenda. That was my intent. I think that's what I was trying to express with, with the words, "out of the motion, pending an executive session," I think is what I said. So, again, we have this back here tonight as an untabling. Clearly, Counselor Hatch tried to, I guess, clarify, that's how I took that, was this was clarification for the city administrator to understand that council sought to have this in the executive session. I think from, you know, when I was racking my brain about this, I think that's what I came to the conclusion was, is that Mr. Kainrath didn't really have a clear understanding of what council wanted. So, again, with, with the motion before us, I still look at it, and you have your motion, but it's, it's...
it's just to further move that the item be placed on a future city council meeting agenda as an executive session item, meaning we'd still have to vote for it to go into that executive session at that time. And that gives the clarity to the city administrator that this council desired that. Now, my understanding would be that a simple majority would rule to see that become an agenda item in the future, which again, we would subsequently have to vote with a three-fifths majority to actually take it up in executive session. So, I mean, I'm comfortable with, and we do have legal counsel here, but I'm comfortable with Councilor Hatch's motion because it, again, exemplifies why we want this executive session on a future agenda. But I'm also comfortable with just leaving this item tabled and scheduling an executive session for when Mr. Hamlin can be present. I understand that might not be for a few days or a month, I'm not very clear on the actual date, but I'm comfortable with that either way. So, thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator Kenrath.
Yeah, thank you. So just to clarify, the meeting of January 9th and what the intent was, the minutes read, the motion is to table and move to an executive session. I know Councilor Hatch and I have discussed this, I believe that was also the intent. If you go back and look at the video, that appears to be the intent. So maybe the intent was unclear, but if you look at the minutes and you look at the video of January 9th, the motion was to move to an executive session. The mayor repeated the motion but did not include the executive session part. I believe the mayor stated just to table. So there is some ambiguity there, if you go back and look at the minutes and the video. So I think staff did their best to try to interpret at that point what was correct. And the minutes, if you look at the minutes read, to an executive session. So, Councilor Hatch, if you had another opinion on that, I know we talked about this extensively, but that appears to be the will of the council. As you know, we then posted that, got an opinion that this item really shouldn't be taken up in executive session, and I forwarded you obviously the other legal guidance after that, which brings us to this moment. So that is staff's understanding and perspective of what happened, but I think if you go back and look at the minutes and the video, that's what we took as the word that we should move forward with.
Councilor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to piggyback on what the city administrator has said and said a little while ago, to Councilor Hatch's intent, we can untable, we can give a full direction to untable and put it on the future, and we don't have to put it on a future agenda. We can actually talk about an executive session tonight with five votes. Now, that being said, if we do, if we attempt to vote on Councilor Hatch's motion with only four votes, if they prevail, it takes it off the table, but I suppose it goes to the semantics of we having to have a second vote. Would that be correct?
If you vote on this as a two-prong, you would need to have another vote if that vote failed to bring it to the table, because right now you're bringing the motion, if I understand it correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Councilor Hatch, your motion is in one motion, and that motion is to untable and move to a future executive session agenda item in accordance with MRS, a, I don't know, 401-6 personnel matters.
That is correct. And to Councilor Berman's point, that night, that that is on the agenda, when we make a motion to move to executive session, historically, they've been unanimous. If you have strong feelings about not bringing it to executive session, then I guess that's the point that you would vote, and then we'd be circling back with a regular action item, and we'll let, I guess, the chips fall where they may. I just think that, I just think this, if we don't respectfully address these issues privately, I'm as uncomfortable with that, Council Berman, as you are with the process. And I think that we owe the city the process, we owe the citizens the process, and I think if we were able to debate this privately, we may not, still not agree, but I think we could actually pose some question as to the impact of this, not only to the individuals, but, you know, I'm personally concerned about the impact that that could have on our new staff. We have a new planner, we have a relatively new planning department. I'm eager to let them spread their wings and bring new ideas to the table, and I've seen it happen in organizations before, where the old guard's brought back in, and all it does is really stifle, with all due respect, I'm not suggesting that Bob is a bad person, he's a really good person. I actually have a lot of respect for Bob, but I don't think it's fair to our new planner and our existing staff to have to have this cloud, if you will, over them. In my experience in business, it doesn't work. And the successful companies that I've worked for basically have let the new guard in, kept the old guard out. Now, the old guard can help in an advisory capacity, there are other ways in which somebody like Bob could contribute his talents to the betterment of our community, and I think he has a tremendous opportunity and ability to do that. I'm just, I'm not convinced that that role is best suited on the planning board.
Thank you. So Councilor Gunn, to get back to your question, the untable and move to an executive session item at a future date would only need four votes to pass, because you're not voting to go into executive session. So therefore, you just need four votes on that motion to pass that motion forward.
Okay. Well, thank you for the clarification, though, because like I said, we didn't want to mess this up, though, by doing something untoward. That being said, you know, like I said, ships fall where they may, though, but I have a couple of councilors here that are, you know, basically saying, I've got information on Bob Hamlin, and I'm going to throw it out here tonight if we don't go into executive session. To Councilor Berman's point, that's more than sad, though, that's insulting to Mr. Hamlin, and it's chilling effect to anyone who's ever had an association with the city, if they ever want to come back and volunteer. To anybody who's ever, you know, who's come up here and complained about Hamlin's performance twice as city planner, remember, he did come out of retirement to help us, and a lot of thanks he got for that, though, it's a thankless position, and whatever, what he did or didn't do as city planner, it goes to the point of whether he's actually qualified to sit on the planning board. His decisions and staff, it's two separate things, and to conflate the two is, it's a nice, it's a nice little bit of political theater, though, but it's unfair to Mr. Hamlin, and I think it's really starting to take us down this path, that it's going to put a chill on anybody who wants to serve them. I mean, there was a person who was on the planning board for all of two weeks, though, and they couldn't handle the heat of the chattering classes on Facebook, though, who didn't like them for the simple fact that they were the mayor's appointment. And that's the point we've gotten to, though, where it's just, I'm left here to wonder, you know, is it really the content of Mr. Hamlin's performance, or is it simply the fact that this mayor is exercising his choice, and some people out here just don't like it because they are under this fiction, though, that the mayor is out, is so against what they view politically, that we have to stop it at all costs, though, with all this kind of theater and stuff. And if that's, I don't want to question people's motives, though, because no one thinks that they're the bad guy in this, though, but, I mean, at some point, you've got to stop and think, look, there's an election this year, there's councilors up here that maybe want to be mayor, you know what? Call them up and say, actually, run for the seat, and then you'll have the appointment power. But until that time, you, Mr. Mayor, have a prerogative that was given to you by the voters. You point, and we approve. And that's how the process likes, the process is. And if you don't like it, either run for office or get someone you like to run for office. There's an election this year. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion that's before us, any further discussion on the motion, and that is to untable this and move to an executive session agenda item in the future, as it will not be this evening? City Administrator Kenrath, did you want to say something?
Yeah, and just on that, just one more reminder that if we were to have an executive session, Mr. Hamlin has to be invited to be present, so would obviously not be able to be this evening or until he were available.
So on the, on the motion, we have Councilor Hatch and then Councilor Archer. Councilor Hatch?
Yeah, I just wanted to dovetail with City Administrator Kenrath's comment. I would, I would welcome Bob's attendance, because I think we owe it to Bob to help us understand his position in some of these situations. And I'm actually optimistic that he might be able to help us better, gain better comfort with his appointment and maybe allay some of the fears that we have. So this is no, this is no attempt to drag, you know, anybody through the mud, it's simply, can we have a forum where we can make sure that even though the mayor has the right to appoint, the council approves, and it doesn't say rubber stamp approve? And I think the planning board, in my humble opinion, is probably the second most powerful body, quasi judicial body in city government, and we've got a lot of long-range land use issues we have to contend with. So that's all it's about, and I think that having Bob there would be a real plus, in my opinion.
Thank you. Council Archer?
Yes, I just wanted to, one, just it was brought up a tad earlier, we did approve six appointments today without discussion. So in this case, for me, it is about the appointment of the planning board, as Council Hatch has mentioned, one of the most important boards that we have. But two, you've got to recognize, I have historical knowledge, because I've been on the council longer than many of you, so I do want to present information to you, and it's not dragging through the mud. The reason why we're trying to go to executive session is to have honest conversations while still protecting the interest of the applicant. So I'm not sure where your perspective, the people that spoke, is or where it lies, but again, it's actually being done in a private setting, not a public setting. That's the intent of this executive session and why the law exists the way it does. But again, we just appointed six with no debate on the floor. It was a consent item that we approved. So again, we do approve, but when there is a controversial or there's information known, we shouldn't use the, again, we shouldn't go public, per se, but it should not silence us either. The executive session allows the council to open up and to not be silenced, to give a different perspective. It may not be that of your own, but it is a valid perspective. So again, historical context, you have a couple of councilors here who've gone through many different items, and I'll, again, I'll talk about it in executive session if that is to occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and counsel for your patience and the audience, we spent a lot of time on this one. I don't think anyone's questioning whether council has the right to go into executive session to discuss this appointment. Council Archer shared with us the state law, we have a legal opinion from the city solicitor. There's no doubt that we can. The question is whether we should. And while we've talked about the procedure, as long as I've been paying attention, we've not gone into executive session to discuss a mayoral appointment. I challenge anybody to point out a time that we have. This is a precedent-setting event, and precedent-setting in what I think is an alarming way, right? If this becomes the new normal, appointments become much harder. So talking about procedure and rights, this isn't the procedure, and I worry that it's also not right.
I do think we have to, whenever this happens, if it happens, however you vote tonight, you have to be very careful, and I think it was kind of mentioned earlier, when you go into executive session, whether you're looking at the appointee on the qualifications of the ordinance to be on the planning board, not the individual's time as an employee of the city of Saco, because the person would no longer be an employee, has not been an employee of the city of Saco. So you have to be very careful with human resource issues versus an appointment to a board or committee. And, you know, does that appointment satisfy the code in relation to planning board service? I think separating those two items is going to be key when you deliberate, whether it be executive session tonight, whenever you decide to take it up. I think we have to be very careful to look at the person's qualifications to serve on the board in accordance with the code, rather than the person's time as the city planner, because this person would be one of seven, just like you folks, one of seven, and not making decisions on behalf of the city of Saco in a unilateral decision-making authority as an employee. So just kind of keep that in mind as we move forward. So any further discussion on untabling and moving to an executive session item on a future date, when the applicant, when the potential applicant could be available? I see no further discussion. Roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
No.
Councilor Gunn?
No.
Councilor Berman?
No.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Only to protect any information that may be discussed, yes.
And Councilor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes four-three, and so we will untable this item and then move it to an executive session at a later date, when the applicant can be present. Is everyone satisfied? Brings us to page 28, item B in your packet, a final reading, amendments to Saco Code, Chapter 112, General Assistance Program appendices. Councilor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Each year, Maine Municipal Association presents municipalities with new appendixes for their city ordinance, which need to be reviewed and adopted. The city of Saco hereby ordains and approves amendments to Saco Code, Chapter 112, General Assistance Program appendices.
Motion's been made by Councilor Archer, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston. Discussion? Councilor Berman?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to amend the ordinance so that Saco adopt the Portland HMFA levels for both the overall maximum general assistance allowed and for the housing maximum general assistance allowed.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilor Berman, second by Councilor Johnston, to move to adopt the Portland HMFA housing and overall maximums. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to point out for the benefit of the public that this comes after a survey of rental properties available, finding few that would have been available for families at the prior levels. In addition, it has been many years since we surpassed our general assistance budget. We anticipate that even with this increase, we will still be well within the budgeted dollars.
Thank you. Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, along those same lines, I think for the last several years that we've done this, I've advocated for this. I mean, this will certainly push us more closer aligned with the actual rental market in this area. Continually see people struggling just to even find an apartment, number one, but to actually afford what's being, you know, or charged is a whole other topic for hopefully another night. So, yeah, I mean, this is a step in the right direction, and I'm supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment only, amendment only? Roll call on the amendment, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Amendment passes seven-zero. Back to the main motion now as amended. Any discussion on the main motion? See no discussion. Roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Main motion passes seven-zero. All right, brings us to item C on page 43, one reading, billing and collections policy. All right, brings us to item C on page forty-three, one reading, billing and collections policy. Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. These changes address the statute of limitations for collections, acceptance of electronic payments, and non-acceptance of cryptocurrency. This updated policy also designates finance director versus director of fiscal analysis responsibilities. Be it ordered that the city council approve these changes to the billing and collections policy, I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion on the billing and collections policy? See no discussion. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero to approve the billing and collections policy. Item D, one reading, capital improvement policy, page fifty in the packet, assigned to Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This update addresses changes to the G S, G A S B standards and simplifies some duplicative language. Be it ordered that the city council approve these changes to the capital improvement policy, I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero to approve the capital improvement policy. Brings us to item E, one reading, disposition of city property policy on page sixty-one in your packet, assigned to Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This update simplifies the process to dispose of city properly, property valued at greater than $10,000. Be it ordered that the city council approve these changes to the disposition of city property policy, I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion? See no discussion. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero to approve the disposition of city property policy. Brings us to item F, one reading, grants and external support policy, page sixty-eight in the packet, assigned to Counselor Hatch.
This update provides additional guidance to align grant efforts with the city's strategic priorities. There is also additional guidance for supported entities that wish to receive budget appropriations during the annual budget process and stronger fiscal review requirements for recipients. Be it ordered that the city council approve these changes to the grants and external support policy, I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion on the investment policy? See no discussion. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero to approve the investment policy. Brings us to item H on page eighty-three in your packet, one reading, the purchasing policy assigned to Counselor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The biggest change in this update is to increase small purchases thresholds from two thou, to five thousand and large purchase threshold to fifteen thousand dollars. This change reflects updates, unified guidance, micro purchase threshold, as well as inflation and the city's general past practices of strong fiscal responsibility. Inventory requirements are also simplified and the city's new direct invoice entry process is reflected in this language. Be it ordered that the city council approve these changes to the purchasing policy, I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Archer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion? See no discussion. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero to approve the purchasing policy. That brings us to item I, one reading, economic development incentive policy on page ninety-six. Counselor Johnston?
The intention of this revision is to create an adopted policy rather than guidelines and compliance with GFOA, best practices for economic development programs. Economic development and finance work together to establish a policy that provides a strong framework for an effective economic development program without creating restrictions that limit the city's ability to work with businesses on a case-by-case basis. Be it ordered that the city council approve the new economic development incentive policy which replaces the previously adopted tax increment financing and credit enhancement agreement guidelines. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Again, I said this during the last meeting on this item, just thankful to staff for tightening up, cleaning this, this policy up. Particularly thankful for the inclusion of scoring metrics to determine worthiness, worthiness for credit enhancement or TIFs. So just thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? See no further discussion. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero to approve the economic development incentive policy. Before we get into the first readings, I want to go back because I did skip over item F, grants and external policy, a one reading, page sixty-eight in your packet, assigned to Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Actually, I believe we skipped, we, we covered that one, but we skipped the investment, the investment policy, I believe. I think. Yeah, I think we.
Yes, thank you, the investment policy.
Okay, thank you. This update cleans up some language to better align with actual operations. The objectives are simplified to improve focus in decision-making. A secondary oversight is established as the city administrator or qualified designee. The definition of diversification is broadened to allow more flexibility. Divestment is, is addressed. A review of banking institutions is required annually using industry best practices. Be it ordered that the city council approve these changes to the investment profit, policy, I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman or Counselor Johnston, any either preference? Okay. Any discussion on the investment policy? See no discussion. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero. That brings us to item J, which is a first reading of chapter four updates on page one oh eight in the packet, and that is assigned to Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. This change simplifies some language and adds the director of budget and fiscal analysis position. The city council approves the first reading of the document titled Amendments to Chapter Four, Section fourteen, Department of Finance, and schedules the public hearing for February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion? See no discussion. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero. Item K, first reading, chapter fifteen, updates on page one eleven, assigned to Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This change, change adds matching funds for grants to the list of qualified, qualified use of surplus and also updates reference codes for certain designated funds and other chapters. This also adds a reference to a recommended new fund titled Proceeds from Sale of City Property, which is addressed in the chapter eighty-one revisions as updated per council feedback. The city council approves the first reading of the document titled Amendments to Chapter Fifteen Funds and schedules the public hearing for February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion on chapter fifteen updates? See no discussion. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero. Brings us to item L, a first reading, chapter eighty-one, updates on page one thirteen in the packet, assigned to Counselor Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This change directs oversight of sale of city property to economic development. This should streamline the process based on council feedback. Surplus proceeds from sale of city property are now directed to a new special revenue fund to be expended for future development projects or as directed by council. The city council approves the first reading of the document titled Amendments to Chapter Eighty-One, Sale of City Property, and schedules the public hearing for February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion? See no discussion. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero. Brings us to item M, a first reading, chapter one seventy-five, senior tax relief updates, page one sixteen in your packet, assigned to Counselor Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These changes remove references to year one of the program to simplify the ordinance and removes references to tax commitment overlay as the program is funded by appropriation instead. The city council approves the first reading of the document titled Amendments to Chapter One Seventy-Five, Senior Tax Relief, and schedules the public hearing for February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Excuse me, second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? See no discussion. Roll call vote. Counselor Pur, excuse me, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero. That completes the action items for this evening. Brings us to item ten, new business. We will hear under item A, Public Works update from Public Works Director Pat Fox.
Good evening. I will spare you a long PowerPoint presentation on Route one twelve traffic updates, but we've had enough of those. So, but it has been a while since we spoke publicly and sort of gave a chance for the public to hear it as well as elected officials, sort of the status of what's going on along Route one twelve. And this is very timely. This was supposed to be last month, but the meeting was canceled. So construction technically begins on the Turnpike project tomorrow. So I guess this becomes a very timely update. So some background, and I will, I'll just highlight a few things and let you ask questions if you'd like, and then we'll, we'll put a memo summarizing what we're discussing tonight on the Route one twelve traffic study section of the website that's under administration projects, and it's one of like only five topics under there. So most of what we're working on now came out of the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen study that we conducted with Main Turnpike Authority and Main Department of Transportation. The two key projects that are kind of, have been moving forward since that time are the signalization of Jenkins Road and the Turnpike's large forty million dollar plus interchange project on one twelve. So on the larger project, Main Turnpike, it's important for us to recognize as we move forward over the next three years, this is a main turnpike, one hundred percent funded, administered, overseen project. My staff and myself will stay as involved as we can, concerned for local interest and bring about any local interest that we, that we feel need to be brought to the table. But ultimately, the, this work is occurring on Main Department, I mean, Main Turnpike Authority property. And while we can address safety concerns, and they certainly are listening, we don't have any say or we're not dictating and we're not funding any of what you see related to that project. So they are moving forward. Sergeant Construction is, was selected as the, as the contractor to move forward with. Like I said, the, the work that starts tomorrow is just mostly, it's not really construction, it's more clear, some clearing, establishing laydown areas, that type of thing. But it'll start to look, you'll start to see construction equipment along one twelve, accessing the area between the Hillview Heights neighborhood and the main turnpike in what will soon be the southbound on-ramp. Twenty twenty-three, they'll basically be doing a lot of trucking, moving gravel and materials onto Turnpike property, building out the adjacent areas of the Turnpike in the area of the interchange. Twenty twenty-four, they'll continue on the Toll Plazas, again, mostly main turnpike work, but there will be trucks accessing from Route one twelve. It's not until summer of twenty twenty-five that they basically put the new traffic signals in that are at Lund Road and the new interchange just west of the Turnpike and work towards actually opening and making all the connections onto one twelve. So any lane changes of Route one twelve, reconstruction of sidewalk, curbing, that type of thing, you won't actually see that until the third summer of this project. Main Turnpike staff will certainly be available. Their, you know, their public outreach and whatnot will be available for council presentation if, if you deem necessary. Otherwise, it'll just be website updates or staff memos that you'll see mostly. Any questions on that? And then I'll give a quick update of where we stand on Jenkins Road.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I, I appreciate how you prefaced your comments with this is a state of Maine or a turnpike project. So hopefully the, the public hears that, not only for counselors, but also for a DPW staff that will undoubtedly still get complaints. In that regard, though, is there any understanding about how this will impact traffic the first two years? Is that expected to be amplified than it already is?[1589.02]
We've only had, so we've had one meeting to sort of start coordinating that, and I imagine it's the first of many. I mean, probably, they're going to have biweekly meetings that I can certainly attend and listen in on their traffic plans, but we'll only have so much staff time to dedicate to the project as well. But we will be certainly suggesting change, you know, what we have learned works along 112 for lane closures and traffic impacts during school season, during school session and out of school with the middle school traffic having to go through their entire 112 access area. So, we've already expressed concerns, but they do have workarounds planned for pedestrian, you know, how, how do you keep pedestrian activity going through the area as they impact 112 more in the out years? I think the first year will be a good chance to just see how the overall project starts to impact it without a lot of, there won't be a lot of lane closures. There'll be very short duration to get equipment on and off their job sites, that type of thing. But we will have regular traffic safety or traffic meetings with them. Corey Hentress from the Police Department will be an integral part of that. He's, he's been a, he's great at coming to these pre-construction meetings and really thinking through the traffic impacts as well. And Joe Laveria, the City Engineer, and myself will pretty much be the, the sort of staff leads on making sure traffic flows as well as it can.
Thank you.
Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any planned operations, what you'd consider nuisance hours, early, early morning or late, late at night? Do they do construction or do they shut it, shut down operations during the evening hours?
I, I don't think they have a lot of night work planned. We haven't seen their sort of month-by-month schedule of the whole project.
Because I know projects like in New York City or large cities are just like, nope, nighttime is when we do it.
There's going to be, there's going to be steps of their project, much like there are limited steps of our Jenkins Road project, that it just, given the volume of traffic, they're just, you can't accomplish some of the things during the day. They don't have a lot of night work planned from what I understand, but I, there will be some, I'm sure.
And I'm just thinking light discipline over the areas where people live. Is that, is it going to be extremely bright, which they should be preparing for, or is it, they have ways to mitigate that?
That's someplace where we could suggest or talk to them about, like, the direction that their light towers are pointing on the work. Some, some work steps, just out of safety necessity at night, need to be incredibly bright so that they can see certain, especially if they're putting up stanchions across the road and bolting them and, and a lot of crane work involved or something. But those should be pretty limited duration, not months at a time. I'll have a little bit better idea if I give you an update.
In time.
Yeah, further into the project after they start construction.
Thank you.
And I'll move on to the Jenkins Road. I know you have executive session left. So, Jenkins Road, just wanted to, so that's been a local effort. We were able to secure $600,000 worth of matching funds from Main Department of Transportation. So, we'll be administering the project, but we got up to $600,000. They'll basically match 50% of whatever we need to do there. The estimate is that that could be over, over a million dollars. So, they will, they will match up to 50% of a $1.2 million project. That project is fully designed. It is getting ready to go out to bid. We will look to do the majority of that construction this summer. The ideal is to be, make sure that that signal is ready to be operational ahead of the interchange coming online for the safety and mobility of pedestrians as well as vehicles coming out of the whole Hillview Heights neighborhood. At least they will have one of their three entrances signaledized and a safe place to get out. No pedestrians after the new interchange opens. We'll be trying to cross Jenkins Road except at a sing, or crossing to Jenkins Road except at a signaled intersection. And the Jenkins Road morning traffic will have set times to dump out lots of vehicles versus just wait one at a time. The final design does involve aligning Hillview Ave with Jenkins Road. Right now, they're offset. So, to optimize that and for safety and just for timing of moving the most vehicles we can, lining up Hillview Ave across from Jenkins is a big part of that construction. So, that means moving some utility poles, moving drainage, accommodating a lot of different things to move those and align them, hence the cost of our local project. And signal, traffic signal equipment and mast arm availability is going to be a driving factor of when that project wraps up. The bulk of the construction is only about eight weeks, but we're hearing that lead times on some of the construction, on the, the new traffic signal equipment could be, it could be up to a year. So, I mean, we might have the alignment done, but the signal won't be able to actually go in. So, we can't preorder that stuff because that's all going to be done as part of the contract. So, once we award the contract after the bid, they will, again, we will give them notice to proceed. Likely, most of the construction will happen during the non-school months this summer to minimize school impacts because we limited their ability to work in traffic quite a bit in the bid document so that we don't impact too much of the middle school commuting hours. And then the only other thing I had was just other things that we'll continue to monitor that were mentioned in the study is the Franklin Street and North Street could get signaledized in the future. That's being actually brought in to some of the larger development plans for that corridor and over in the Bradley Street area could, could be contributing or constructing some of that infrastructure to allow better access to 112. We will monitor Spring Street in the long term, and then some that really have to wait to see what the new interchange brings for local and regional traffic flow is the Garfield Street turn restrictions that we have will stay in place until the new interchange opens, at which time we'd be able to see if, if the reduced traffic down to Industrial Park Road actually allows those to reopen. But I don't think any modeling software can tell us that. We just need to wait and see on that one. And the same with, there's been talk of Route 5, 112 connector road, or does the, does Loudoun Road's use change? Those things are just things that we should wait, let the interchange open, see what people's driving patterns are. We're in no position to fund locally a connector road between 112 and Route 5, and I think that's important for everyone to understand. You're talking a $5 to $10 million roadway when essentially Loudoun Road is already a connector. If we find that that's too far out and there's future benefit after the interchange opens, then we'll tackle that as, how do we want to fund that and how do we want to go at it? But that really is a more 25, 20, 2025, 26 endeavor. So, that's the status of 112. We'll post sort of an update on the city website. I think a lot of people do rely on that section of the website for knowing what's going on along that corridor.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Fox? Thank you very much.
Yeah.
That completes New Business. That brings us to item 11 of the agenda, and that's the administrative updates. City Administrator Kinnair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An update on the Army Corps of Engineers project. I had a meeting with them last week. They're currently seeking guidance from headquarters on the Word of Funding implementation. After that, we actually get into the PPA discussion. And I tried to pin them down on some, some hard timelines, but that's not always easy. We will, once they begin working on crafting the model or draft PPA, that should take them approximately two months. Following that, the negotiation phase with the city, they're anticipating two or three months to have an executed agreement. So, as of right now, it is the hope, the strong hope, that in the first half of 2023, we can have a PPA discussion and an executed document. I think that's somewhat optimistic. I think if we did it this calendar year, that's still a win for us. But everyone should know this is still on track. We are moving forward with this. We continue to be persistent with the Army Corps in talking about the needs of getting this project done. And our congressional delegation, along with our staff here, remains fully involved and invested in pushing this forward. So, I think overall, a positive update, and we will, we will keep at it and, and keep moving things along. An upcoming agenda preview, on February 13th, we will have our joint meeting with the School Board. We will have a Q2 budget update with the city and the schools presenting, Chapter 83 policy update, employee handbook updates, and a contract zone for 265 North Street. On the 27th, which will be a workshop meeting, we'll be doing our annual council goal-setting exercise. We'll have a discussion on LD 2003. And that's what we have for now. Please submit, though, any additional items to me by the 22nd that you'd like to appear on the workshop agenda for discussion. I just wanted to say thank you, this is involving the recent weather, to everyone involved with preparations to get us through this recent, recent cold spell from public safety to public works, all of our departments. We had, as you know, the community center open during the daytime. We had the train station open at night in addition to the church, the UU church here in town. We did not have any attendees at the community center, but we did have four unhoused individuals overnight at the train station. And I just wanted to extend a special thank you to GA Director Gene Maynard, who joined me in staffing that, the station overnight. So, thank you to her. Thank you to all staff. Thank you, our departments, for your work over the past weekend. We did not go totally unscathed, though. Our building here, City Hall, we did have a pipe burst, actually right behind here in the stage area, and significant water damage did occur right below us in the code enforcement area on the first floor. So, thank you to Don Roth and his crew for all of their work in cleanup and arranging necessary repairs. We're still kind of getting a handle on what will be needed, but it could go as high as $75,000 in damages. Obviously, we have insurance. But it could have been worse, but it is a fairly significant event we had here at City Hall. Lastly, I just wanted to mention something about the Transportation Center. I think you've heard me say this before, but we are actively working and engaged to improve the overall situation there when it comes to any potential illegal activity or those who may be camping or other activities there that are not permissible. So, our police department has increased patrol substantially. We are keeping a very close eye on it. There are cameras also in the station monitoring the situation. And I will say also that it is my intention, one way or another, that we will have a full-time staffed individual there overseeing the train station and providing that sort of presence by the middle of this year. There are a couple of ways to accomplish that that are being worked on. You may see it in the budget or maybe a negotiation with some of our current tenants in the building. But I just want the public to be aware, the train station is something that we, the administration here with the city is absolutely keeping an eye on. We are working actively to improve the situation, and we are going to have a fully staffed, full-time presence there in the near future as many of the other stations on the line are. So, for everyone to keep that in mind, and we are fully engaged there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for City Administrator Kinnair? No questions. Moving on to item 12, council discussion and comment. Any council discussion and comment this evening? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was moved by the presentation of Gene Saunders and others from Age Friendly Saco, and I would greatly appreciate it if we could see an update on what would be involved in reopening the commercial kitchen at the community center and, and making it available for nonprofit or community use. Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator Kinnair?
Yeah, thank you. I definitely will receive an update, but I just wanted to also put out there that we are already actively engaged in moving forward with the process. You heard Glenn Sharet tonight talk about the inspector coming tomorrow. So, this is, this is in the works. There's been some productive dialogue between city staff and Age Friendly over the past several weeks in moving this forward, and this is already actively in the works to happen. So, just rest assured that it is, it is moving forward and it will happen.
Any further council discussion and comment? Seeing no further council discussion and comment, moving to item 13, Executive Session. Is there a motion to enter executive session? Counselor Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Be it ordered that the city council entering to executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6, regarding C, Economic Development, E, Consultation Legal Counsel, and A, Personnel Matters.
Motion's been made by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Roll call vote to enter executive session. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. We're going to take a five-minute recess, and we'll be meeting downstairs in the conference room. So, five minutes downstairs in the conference So five minutes downstairs in the conference room.
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion on exiting? Roll call to exit. Counselor Archer?